Yeah. I will say this.
We looked Ethan's talk for a minute there.
We feeling good about this today?
I want to hear everybody's concerns and questions so that we can. Alright, so now the audio will be right in front of you. Okay?
Just aim it towards them, so pick them up. I don't want to look at me all mean.
Well, I can.
I'm just kidding.
I trained in the theater, I'll be okay.
I prefer not to see myself.
I try not to do any theatrics, I'm not very good with that stuff.
I would find that terrible. Just leave that like that, but this is gonna.
If I, if like, I could see myself.
Is that okay?
Yeah, I don't want to look at myself either.
Well, it doesn't need to, I don't think it needs to be up.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I think that it doesn't need to be up.
I'm keeping an eye on John.
Well, it's funny you say that, but my son will FaceTime it, then he'll put his phone so it looks.
Am I still in it?
Right.
You are actually.
Panorama.
We're gonna hold out for a minute or two more since Jonathan is on here. He is. I was gonna say, he just texted me and said he was on his way.
Alright, first things first. Alright.
No worries.
My day is off with the work days and I have a party going on. It's a hockey night.
Hi Kathy, we're here, we're just about to start. Okay, my internet is very cloudy, so I might be in a. Okay, Kathy's been having thunderstorms lately.
Oh, I know, yeah. Couple of nice boos this afternoon.
Yes, very much so. Are we ready? Everybody all set? Jonathan, you all set? Alright. I'm gonna call us to order, we have a quorum. If I ask everybody to stand and pledge their allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright, we'll give everybody a moment to look at the agenda.
Halfway through.
Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda.
Wonderful, second?
One second.
Okay, all in favor? Wonderful, thank you. Alright, here we go, budget discussion. I know that there were people that had questions. So. Kim, do you want to give us a quick overview as to this new proposed budget? And then we'll go into questions after that.
Okay, so we, after our last meeting, we went in and we made some adjustments to the budget, which resulted, instead of having a 3.06% increase, the bottom line of this budget is up 2.18%. To get there, we reduced the health insurance. It's a, the, the way that health insurance is reduced is by a percentage, so it came out to be about a $58,000 savings. We increased liability insurance. We added $14,000 to cover an increase in liability insurance of $13,000 in change. We added $3,000 for social work supervision. We added $25,000 to out-of-district placement.
That was, I'm sorry, that was in reference to last time when you were talking about out-of-place records.
Out-of-district.
Yes. Placements, and we were concerned that that was going to be an issue.
Yes. Yes, because of the number of kids that we currently have. The amount of money that we budgeted plus the amounts in reserve would leave us $25,000 short.
Yep.
So we added $25,000 there. We reduced food service back to $50,000. We had, it was $50,000 last year, we'd increased it to 68, but based on numbers, Kathy, I think that would be a good place to save. So we made that $50,000. We adjusted staffing throughout. So where people were, people who resigned were replaced by other people, we adjusted those salaries. The salaries are not adjusted through the payroll portion of the whole fund. There, if you notice, there's several columns. One of them says from payroll, one of them says from other. We made those adjustments in other because Shelley is the person who manages that payroll function and she's been on vacation. So that'll be, so the bottom line works out, but that will need to be adjusted. I cut $5,000 from water and sewer. I cut $40,000 from electricity and I cut $10,000 from oil.
Does last year's used to.
Yes.
Warrant those cuts?
Yep, it does. And even the year before. But just, you know, we left it the way that it was, but we made those cuts. I asked the admin team if they had any suggestions. Laura Johnson said we could reduce her food service, which we did. And Stacy said if we had to, we could talk about cutting two consultants that were on board this year and would like to bring them back next year. One is Laura Perry. Just my mind for a minute. Laura Perry, she's the BCBA and she.
So the BCBA is?
It's a sort of ID your specialist. And so she works with the special ed department. She also did work with the gen ed department this year that we had budgeted out of Title II funding. Now. We don't have, I don't think we have any of her in Title II funding for next year, but also, we might not be getting title funding next year, that's on hold right now. And usually, there's an announcement about when it's coming. And that has, what we got is said is that there's no announcement. And stand by. So we, we may be losing that. And then the other one is Carrie Thurston, and she does literacy training. And so we started the program with her this year under a literacy grant. And they, they started it with third, fourth, and fifth grade and had really great results and would like to continue to work for next year with kindergarten first and second grade. I would love to see it spread into the middle school, but that's what the other amount. So between those two consultants for our general education, it's about $40,000. If we wanted to.
And has that been taken out of this already, or is that additional?
No, I would take it out if you instructed me to. I would.
This is, this one that sits right before us is already 2.18%?
Yes. Yes.
What would the impact of losing those two people do to our schools?
The impact of losing, well, it would just take away some efficiency. It would take away some of our program improvement plan. So behavior is an area that we're trying to improve upon and academic scores is another area that we're trying to improve upon. We want to teach our kids how to read. And so, you know what's been happening over the past few years is kids are arriving at middle school, which traditionally was a time where you're not learning to read, you're reading to learn. And they're getting up here and they still are not all fully reading. And that's not just this asset phenomenon, this is happening in many places. So Carrie Thurston's program is kind of the old way that we used to do. When I say old way, I'm thinking all the way back to when in the 80s, when I was a student and they moved kids, they had reading groups.
Yep.
And they would be level programs and it didn't necessarily have to stay inside a classroom. It's something that, and that's what we're coming back to after, you know, a departure from that. And so that's the work that she does. And it's proving really effective. So. We did have her for a year. You know, it's not as if we've, we will have lost that knowledge, but then it would be putting the onus on to staff, to train other staff, and I don't know if, you know, it would be outside of their contracted work, so.
So they both come in as consultants, so they're not, they're not here in and out, day to day?
No, a few hours a week. Yep.
What was Carrie, who was the other one?
Laura Perry.
Okay.
And we would need to keep Laura on board. She's also budgeted partially under special ed. And we can't cut that because she's written into ITPs. So we have to have a BCBA. Her, so in order to have Laura Perry, and she's excellent, we need to provide her at least 15 hours a week. And that's okay, we split it up between gen ed and special ed. The work that she's done in gen ed is not with students. She actually doesn't work with students. Both of these people work with staff. And they work with staff to improve. Yeah.
Are we all set?
I think so. Carrie, Kathy, do you want to add anything on that budget overview? Oh wait, hold on. Okay, Kathy, do you want to add anything? Kathy?
I think that covers it.
Okay.
Questions?
Stacy's the only department head who responded with a potential cut.
Yep. Everybody's in and out on vacation. And I know John had said he would look in his. I definitely believe that we can get away with cutting electricity and oil.
Well, yeah, what I saw typically, oil was $50,000 over budgeted. Carryover every year.
Yeah, same thing with electricity and water and sewer, I think too. Water and sewer was higher for a long time. Apparently there was a leak for an undisclosed amount of time at the elementary school that they just thought was part of. Like if there was flood under the floor, it went into a drain. I don't know the exact details, but that's been remediated, so that should help.
I don't have the article numbers in front of us, but we also voted on articles for fuel, health insurance, special education. They totaled up to like 1.6 million.
You mean the, the.
On the warrant items.
Balance?
Yes, like we designated, breaking up into designated instead of just having that.
We have $225,000 for special ed, $80,000 for health insurance, in case something goes crazy there, $50,000 for fuel, which I think it's worded as fuel and diesel. I don't know if you would have the ability to say, well, we need heating fuel if that were the impact was.
You use a lot of fuel on your buses.
Yeah, we haven't had to touch that reserve yet, but that's just in case. And that was set up before I got here, probably when gas, gasoline prices go, and diesel prices went really high a few years ago.
Is the $225 for sped being used to offset those costs? Are we pulling from that at all? I know we needed $25,000 more for out-of-district. That's already using that up?
Yes. Yes.
So the plan would be, hopefully, we could put mighty back into that from the general fund as each year goes on, we can.
Well, we have. Kathy and I talked about the fund balance and I brought you a fiscal year 25 fund balance projection. I also brought, on top of that, the state valuation history. And I think I'm gonna ask Kathy to review these documents with you. And she had earlier had said that she felt like reviewing the valuation first would probably make more sense. Would make you understand why we don't recommend that you take a lot more money out of the fund balance. But Kathy, can I turn that over to you to? Oh, do you guys just send you a picture, or are you back online?
Nope, I actually have it up.
Okay, perfect.
Yay. Do they all have copies of it?
Yes, they do.
Okay. So it's a state property value, state valuation history. And right underneath that title, you'll see the link to the State of Maine website where you can look at those. If you want to look at, it has every town in the, in the state and it's listed by county. You can see how, what the towns beside us are looking like. But look what happened to us in 2025. The property value in List Pass, it went from 675,000, actually, that's 675,800,000 to 837,500,000. An increase of 24%. At the same time, the state average, which you can see right below that, went from 275 billion to 311 billion, which was a 13% increase. So property values are going up significantly, but they appear to be going up even faster in List Passit. And just below that, what I'm showing is how our state's subsidies are calculated. The state gives us so much money for students for our total allocation, which is, was 5.5 million a share. And then they decide how much of that they will give us and how much that the district has to raise as a minimum. And to do that, they look at your property values and apply a mill rate. So for the current budget year that we're still trying to put together, this year '26, they look at the average of 24, 28, 22, 23.
You're starting to break up on us.
For the next year, they will be looking at the average of 24. Oops, I have that wrong, 25. That's a typo.
Kathy?
It's 25, 24, and a 23.
You, you got a little bit glitchy.
Okay.
Are you hearing us okay?
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, we can hear you now.
Did I lose you?
We're here, can you hear me?
Hello?
I'm gonna call you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, but I don't think you can hear me.
Can we FaceTime her or?
Yeah.
I can hear you.
Oh, you can, then, then we can hear you too, so then.
I'm hearing you okay.
Alright, go ahead.
Okay.
If we get glitchy, I might just call you.
There's still thunderstorm.
Okay.
Yeah. Hello?
Yes, go ahead.
I'll call her.
Yeah.
Okay, so you're hearing me now. I'm also losing my voice, so that doesn't help. Take a good water. I am.
Hey, I think we're just gonna, we're gonna just do the phone instead, is that right?
Sure.
Okay. Alright, you're here.
So, next year, yeah, our property values are gonna be 14.58% higher when they calculate how much the town has to raise. So. In fiscal year '26, the mill rate was 6.1 and the town had to raise 3.6 million. If the mill rate stays the same and it's applied to our new property values for next year, we'll have to raise $4,198. So half a million dollars more would be my estimate, unless that mill rate drops substantially, and I don't think it will, it might drop a little bit. So, and then if you look further down the road, if, if that trend continues at even a 10% increase for the next couple of years, we would be looking at being a minimum receiver, which means we just get a little bit of state money for special ed. And physically, education would be almost 100% funded by the time it was passed it. So I think what the numbers are showing us is that's what's gonna happen within the next two or three years. So having said that, if we're looking at a half a million dollar deficit and it's state funding for next year, we want to really make sure we hang on to fund balance so we don't have a double whammy, so to speak. We don't have that fund balance to fall back on and we'll, we'll lose any half a million dollars in state funding. Does anybody have any questions about that?
No?
I wish it was better news. I know I did talk with, with your town manager and he said he looked at the property values and they looked accurate.
The property values, Kathy, are based on a three-year average?
Yes.
And I know that after the pandemic, a lot of people moved to Maine because they could, right? They were, they were remote workers and suddenly houses on my street that were 250,000 were selling for 800,000. And then they're not anymore, right? The prices are coming back down. They're not 250,000, but they're also not going for 800,000, they're going for 450. So do you think that the valuations will come down and this rolling average will bring us? Have you seen in your experience where someone was a minimum receiver and then that recedes and they go back to being able to collect subsidy if the valuations go down? Is that just a naive thing to even consider? What I'm wondering is if we were to go to the state and challenge it, do you have a case saying that like, look, these property values were inflated because of this thing that occurred where the markets went crazy and people were fleeing, you know, the cities and moving to rural Maine? Maybe they could do something?
Yeah, I think since it wasn't just this pass it, it's, it's all over the state. Right? But I do think that's a point we, I've never seen property values go down. State property values go down in the 40 years I've been doing this, but it, it could happen. That would be, that would be great.
Yeah. It just was such a big jump.
Yeah. Yep.
Okay, so due to this, because of this data, your recommendation is? Dot, dot, dot.
Not to take more than the 600,000 that they're, that were already taken from fund balance because we're gonna need that fund balance to help offset this loss of state subsidy that I predict for next year.
So the second page in your packet, guys, is the fund balance projection. And I don't know if you want to walk them through that too, Kathy?
Yeah, let me find it. I got too many windows open here. Okay, this is, and this is a preliminary projection because we're still closing the year. This, I've, I've still got things to post and we're still paying bills with this year '24. But this is a preliminary look. That we're gonna have 510,000, or we do have 510,000 remaining right now if you were to look at the budget to actual. But I do have to do a payroll accrual and I know that Shelley has a lot of additional bills that need to be paid and some of those bills are out-of-district tuition costs and those are really high. So I'm projecting 100,000, but again, that's just a very wild guess. I'm hoping there won't be much more than that. Hoping that it'll be less, actually. Which would give us a balance of 403,68 from this year's operations that we can apply to the current undesignated fund balance. So underneath that, maybe we have the undesignated fund balance of 1.1 and we're adding to it to the 400,000 from this year. The town transferred the interest that they owed us to us, 476,000. And then we're using 600,000 to balance this budget. And we're moving 325 to capital reserve for the gym project. And we're moving 80,000 to a health insurance reserve. So the projection that our undesignated fund balance at the end of this year will be 694,000 if we come out right on budget. If we're able to have some carryover from operations again at the end of next year, that would go higher. So that would be a conservative estimate at this point.
And then I would say that we need to start weaning ourselves off of the 600,000 a year.
Yes.
Yes. Because we've done it the past three years.
I did also want to say that they were gonna cut it, the maximum fund balance to 5%, but that did not pass. It's gonna stay at 9%. So we could actually have 951,000 in fund balance. But if it was one 5%, we'd be over it.
And we were over 9%. They haven't, they haven't been enforcing that.
The only way we come back to 9% is by, we created capital reserve, health insurance, fuel. So those went to designated fund lines, so that brought us back down to the 9%. Because we have, whatever, 1.699 in there, almost 1.7 million. Take 600,000 out for this budget and then the other designated fund balance lines, then we drop that down to the 9%. Is that, she said the 5% is, it didn't pass, is that still in talks? Is that still in legislation? Is it still like, they're not bringing that back, that's not gonna get brought back?
So and then the last thing in that packet is the latest budget to actual as of June 30th. And again, there will be, there will be adjusting entries. There will be entries that can be booked. But she did book the summer salaries, so we see that. That's a big one, 700,000.
So let's clarify, we created designated sped, fuel, health in there. Does that require anything special? Something astronomical happens and we need that 50,000 for fuel? Do we need to go to a town vote? Can we just pull that money out?
We can just spend it. And then they do a, so when that happens, Kathy, I don't know if you heard Jonathan, but he asked if we needed to spend the sped money or the fuel reserve? We can just spend it, right? And then you do a journal entry? We do not need to go in front of the town again?
Yeah, I, we don't have to go in front of the town, but I do believe we have to go in front of the board.
Okay. Did we go in front of the board for the capital reserves the past two years? I don't remember doing that.
Oh, that's a good point.
Yeah. Let's, we'll look into that one. That's a great idea.
And we'd like to know.
Yeah.
What that looks like.
Yep. Yep, because I'm pretty sure we did not, for the capital reserves, but maybe a capital reserve account is different than another type of.
Yeah, I mean, if we don't have to, don't need any type of approval for it, just let us know at the next meeting or finance meeting or something, just so we know. Then, but come budget season, all of a sudden, we're like, where'd that 500,000 go? We know you spent that, something was needed.
Yeah, we got approval from the voters.
Yes. Yeah, I mean, come budget season, all of a sudden, you're saying, we're down $325,000 from the sped account. Just, we already know that ahead of time from.
Yeah.
That would also be reported at finance meetings.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, you'll, we'll be right on top of that sped account. All of them, but that one we have to watch closely.
I was wondering if we should have put more into the sped, we're already spending that, right?
We are. And so, one thought Kathy and I were talking about was actually putting on this warrant, asking the town for permission to move, to put another 100,000 into a sped reserve account. But when we looked at the fund balance. we it's getting tight, like we don't want to spend that money, so. We could do that. I mean, you could decide today that you wouldn't ask the town to put it all, you know, into an offset taxes or something, but it would it would just be creating a bigger problem next year, like a cliff. It would create a cliff. And considering we're going to have a loss of subsidy most likely again next year.
Let's get the balances. Well, I guess there's a sped ask. There's a GoFundMe page online that a sped teacher or ed tech is running, raising money, saying their classroom is not fit for the students they are teaching. I feel like that's something we should be funding if that's true.
A GoFundMe page?
Yes.
Or is it donors choose?
I think it's a GoFundMe page. It's the one I s- I saw that was shared. Um, it's a Wisconsin employee raising money on their own for their classroom, saying for their special ed students, we don't have the equipment, we don't have the we don't have the stuff needed for an conducive learning environment for their students.
I would have to look into that.
And they're raising, they're trying to raise it from the public.
Yeah.
Which I'm all for. We need to we need to phase money, raise money. I'd rather make sure like we're doing that as a district.
Yeah.
Teachers feeling they need to go out on their own.
No, and I don't know that we have turned down anybody's big requests. We were pretty generous in our budget, so I.
I think two for one, if somebody's gonna, yeah, if somebody's gonna fundraise on behalf of a school, the school district, that should be going to a designated account that's controlled by somebody in the district.
Right. Yeah.
Unless they're gonna make a donation at the end.
One thing that teachers do are donors choose, which is something that um, there are some teachers that do it every year and they go um, it's where you make a little video of the project that you want to do in your classroom and then people around the country will contribute to it and usually, not usually, but I'm told that a lot of times some wealthy benefactor will just go in and they'll fund all of the education ones. Those are usually for things like the one I'm thinking of who does it every year is Trace Over. And she will, you know, say, we're going to do a monarch butterfly project and we would like to get every kid, they're all on like monarch caterpillar set or something. Um, but I'm I'm not familiar with the GoFundMe. That's probably not appropriate. Yeah, that's different and it's not something that I've seen here before.
Yeah, I'll I'll find us any of the link. I just, again, if if that's needed for that classroom, especially a sped classroom, like we should, we should fund that.
100%.
Find the find the money so they're not feeling like they're going out begging the public for money.
Exactly. And that that's really not a, uh, yeah, well, I'll reserve because I.
Right, they'll they'll research it out and find out what.
Yep.
Where exactly it is. Uh, we put 3,000 for supervision for a social social worker. What's this? What is that?
So um, for licenser, licenser, for the social workers, they need to complete a number of supervision hours. And uh, one of our social workers has 13 more hours and one of them has a few more hours. I had zeroed it out. I thought that last year um, we we were all done, but one of them still needs hours, so they asked if we could put it back in. And since the budget was rejected, I put it back in. So um, I feel like that that is something um, almost like a required course that a teacher would have to take. So if we have a condition and we do have conditional teachers who need to take one or two required classes and we pay for those classes, I sort of thought of it in the same way.
And we're a good twist reimbursement for everybody else already, so I think it kind of kind of falls on the same thing. They have to take it, might as well get reimbursed for it. What's SWIS?
SWIS, um, I don't know exactly what the acronym is, but it it's the um, system, it's an information system that gathers data on behavior. Um, it's part of PBIS and they use it in um, elementary school and we're bringing it up here. So it enables the teacher, it enables the school counselor to come, I think she's actually stood before our board and given a report. And she's definitely done it with the staff and like this, you know, we are seeing that behaviors are increased during the time when students are lining up on the playground to return from the cafeteria. Like that's that's the time and then everyone will talk about what they can do with that data and how they can make adjustments.
So that that SWIS manages the data so we can have.
Yeah.
Who, how does the data get collected? Is that just teachers got to like put it in? Admins got to go in and put it in?
Uh, the school counselor does. So teachers fill in sheets, they call them fit sheets. Um, and at my last school, we we called them behavior referrals and be fit, how we stand for something, behavior intervention.
Yeah.
To get, that's probably what it is. Um, a lot of what they do is they uh, collect the data on um, kids who are doing good things, like have to be good, but also when there are maladaptive behaviors, they track it so that they can figure what it is.
What's the trigger once?
Exactly. It's not so much on a stupid vice student case. It's you can look at that data, but they're looking at it systematically so they can see like, is it, is there a problem with our boys' room on the third floor? Like why, why is there, that's just an example, you know?
Sure.
Yeah. I have to tell you, um, I don't want to shake the boat here, like if that's the system that they've been using for years and it works for them, I think it's really good. If um, things became really draconian, I could see replacing that with a group order. But, you know.
Ultimately.
I wouldn't want to.
It's Boston's.
I wouldn't want to just do that top down. I would want to talk to them about it. I think it'd be a good type of transition.
Oh, it's under dues and fees and that's part of it. That kind of category is five, 570, 570 dollars with clues with obvious. I always, I saw it accurately. I knew I heard it somewhere else.
Yeah, I and Jonathan, I got about this far through your your um, thing, so I can.
Mine's just quick highlighting stuff and a lot of it.
And so I don't have answers for everything yet, but we can go through it if you want to. I'm doing my best.
Let's highlight, school physician, we raised a thousand dollars for.
Yeah.
I'm on page six.
Thank you. So that's Dr. Russ and um, that is every year, this doesn't really do this for waste health center, but uh, this school has a contract with a physician, just in case the nurse needs to call and get um, some advice or there's an issue or there's something going on. It's just a thousand dollar fee with Dr. Russ from um, Miles Pediatrics.
So that's part of a health clinic?
No.
Dr. Russ isn't the health clinic?
He's part of Lincoln Health, but this is separate from that. This is um.
So our school nurse would be calling the doctor? They could call him?
Yep.
Okay, so that's separate. I was curious.
Yeah.
This is the doctor assigned to the clinic or this was just assigned to like the school nurses needing to talk to somebody?
Exactly. And it has nothing to do with the clinic and it's not real. Um, the the next page under curriculum, you'll see that if we had 15,000 dollars in the budget line, I cut that um, down to 5,000, would be a 5,000 dollars stipend for ESI. And then I added um, some money for training down below 500 dollars. And then I also added a thousand dollars over supplies. Um, that's for testing. So we, our our kids um, are not testing well. And a lot of it is um, literally students will just click through and spend seven minutes on the test because they just don't care. And they and it's reinforced by different things, that these tests don't matter. But we know that they do matter because they end up getting posted and people are like looking at the test results. So we're working on that and this thousand dollars is literally for like your number bars of bananas on test day because everyone knows when you eat a banana before you take a test, it it's a brain booster. Um, so I just dropped that money in there thinking that um, this year I want Chelsea manages testing and I want to let her kind of redesign the way we're doing testing so that it can be, the school can have more of a culture of honoring the importance of this academic milestone. It does, it does matter, so.
And is that a message that's being given to the kids that it does matter? I mean, I, that's a hard one because.
I don't think so. I don't think that that, it it is in elementary school, um, but the culture here is different, but if we're changing it, we need to change it. Um, and so one of the ways that we'll change it for next year is Chelsea's going to have um, the authority to manage testing 100% and it will be um, it will be handled differently so that she can make sure that everybody's there. And we we also have to inform our parents. We had a problem this year with kids texting mom and dad during at the test session, saying get out of this test and then their parents pulling me out of this and being like my child's excuse for the test. And that there are a lot of kids who did that this year, like once, once they saw that it was happening, that they were all doing it. So I I really want to um, change that. And we have a staff member who understands the importance of testing, who are going to ask to work with Chelsea. It's Shari Dunham who's a science teacher and she, she will be supportive in this. But you know, when test days are in the calendar, I don't want any field trips going out.
Right.
Right? Like this, I will, because that just sends the message that test is not important. It's more important to go do something outside. And we actually have to do both, give me the balance.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You're not referring just to standardized tests you're talking about?
This is just the standardized tests. Yeah, then we have to do, um, and it's the data that's collected and posted on the state's data um, dashboard. And our numbers don't look good at all and they're definitely not accurate. So we want to work on at least providing accurate data and you can't have accurate data if, you know, 30% of your students are opting out and 30% are just clicking through, so.
Yeah, we don't know if it's accurate scores or not that are being reflected and I'm not an expert on testing. I s- I know at the elementary level, the fact that even seven, six, seven, eight-year-olds are sitting on a computer screen for a test and they're click, 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 click. I don't know, is paper testing an option? We can't do.
Fill them in the circle, huh?
Yeah.
I don't recommend it despite my two sitting on tablets right now because it's very quiet. I recommend for screens is an hour a day, but they have, like I tell you, my seven-year-old, I'll date now, downtown mentor school is getting way more than an hour every day just at school on screens.
And so that's one of the reasons, Jonathan, that I I'm a big component of the outdoor education and the experiential learning. But we also are required to do these standardized tests and the data is posted.
So can you do the little fill in the dot once or is this like no longer? I know my Catholic school still does the fill in the dot once. That's why I'm.
We could find out. So.
Just force them to focus more.
You have to use the NUIA through year. Um, it's it's the three-year assessment. So NUIA is actually one of the more useful tests that's out there because it, as a teacher, you can get um, results immediately and it's targeted, so you can provide targeted interventions for your students in certain areas. It's like a good tool. So when Maine, when the commissioner of education Maine decided to choose its standardized test tool, she made it the NUIA, but then the federal government rejected it. And so then the next, so it started in COVID. The COVID year, we didn't have to do testing at all. And then the next year, she, under making said, let's do NUIA because this is a tool that teachers actually find to be useful. But then the federal DOA rejected that. So then NUIA, because they don't want to lose the business, changed and created um, this this MAP through year. It's the through year, MAP, it's the NUIA through year assessment. It's not a great test, but it fits what the federal government needs. We have to do it. If we, although if they take away the ESI money, we don't have to do that anymore. Right? So that's, that's why we do it. We do it because we want to qualify for those federal funds. If they're going to take them away, then maybe we.
They're not taking Title I. For sure.
Okay. They're just not telling us when we're getting it, yeah.
The applications are locked in for Title I, so we'll be getting it once the application's approved.
Okay.
So sorry, I went off on.
Yeah, that's all right. I hit, yeah, I could talk about testing. I'm not a big fan at all, but um, I also recognize that the data's getting posted and people from the public are accessing it and then criticizing the school.
If we're, if we're text, if we're testing, it needs to be accurate and it needs to be useful data.
Yes.
So that's why I I was asking because testing just for testing sake is dumb.
It is.
It it needs to be useful data.
Yes.
And I, so that's why, when you're telling me the kids are just clicking through things, I'm like, mm, that does us no good. So, all right, sorry.
So that's anyway, that's what that money I dropped in there was.
Most mine, like, like one big item I was looking at is the entered on page 21.
Thank you.
Page 21.
Electricity, energy, energy oil, like middle of the page, right under the telephone sections. We cut 20,000 out of electricity, 20,000 out of electricity, but only 4,000 out of energy. And we're still 13,000 over what we've ever spent, so we.
Yeah, I guess I was just worried about the cost of that of oil. We.
Oh, we use it. We had that 50,000.
Yes.
Emergency reserve we needed. Well, even if we cut 10,000 instead of four.
50,000 dollar reserve for fuel, can we use that for oil or is that only for diesel?
It can be used for either.
Okay. We could cut, we could find more savings.
Yeah, we we've only ever spent 44,000. We're budgeting 58, so if we cut 10 instead of four, that still leaves us like 5,000 dollar buffer outside of the fuel line.
Yeah.
That's just, just one, one suggestion.
Just a warning that we might, we probably still have invoices that need to be posted. Are you looking at the current year to date?
Yes.
Right, the current year to date is 43,700. Last year, actual was 42,700.
Okay.
So um, the AP person who is Shelley is back from vacation next week and I can um, I can ask Shelley and John, like if they feel like we're going to have more oil bills coming in? I'm I'm okay with that.
You know, if we spent, you know, if we spent 44 or 45 this year, but we cut eight out of the budget, that still leaves 50,000, which still goes a six more than we've spent. Because I agree, we should keep some type of a, a little bit of a buffer and everything like electricity and fuel and stuff that we never know can spike through the roof because of the world that we live in.
Um, yeah, do you want to just, do you want me to just make that 10,000 into 20,000?
Yeah.
Say that again? So just, I'm looking at that one line.
Well, there's two, the ones for the high school. 090 is for the elementary school and 300 is for the high school. So we took, I reduced 4,000 at the elementary and 6,000 at the high school, but I could just double both. And make it twelve that.
Is the bottom line the high school one you're looking at? 300, the 300?
Yeah, that's 300 this high school.
But we spent 65 this year?
Yep, 64, 898.
So I also wonder if everything is coded accurately, like if sometimes, like why would one school be spending so much more than the other? We could put.
Well, we might spend more together. I'm just cautious about if we spent 65,000 this year, but we're only going to budget 59. Puts us in a 6,000 dollar hole.
Well, I would assume high schools' budgets and.
Right, it's going to cost more to run one than the other. I just want to make sure. I think I think we could cut the elementary 10K instead of cutting it 4K.
Okay.
But I also want to make sure that we're not cutting ourselves short at the high school. Saying we only need 59 and we already spent 65.
Okay.
So.
I hear what you're saying.
I don't want to over, go way over what we don't need, but I also don't want to go way under what we don't need either and then I don't have to pull from the fund balance. We don't want to, unless we absolutely have to.
All those monies to move around inside each cost center, so. I mean, there's a lot of stuff to work with there before you get into your fund balance.
True. And like I said, we got 500,000 left over, 400,000 in a year, so that's true. So yeah, I'd recommend cutting out the elementary school, reducing it 10K instead of 4K. That's my my opinion.
Is everybody comfortable with that?
Traditionally, every year we're moving 450,000 into the fund balance.
So that's my.
So if we find 150, we still got 300 floating around in here.
Is everybody comfortable with that?
Yeah.
Kane, Christopher, okay, please.
Got it.
Thank you.
I I jumped down a page, most, the last line on 26, but so the whole page of 27 kind of lays it all out. Just a question on that.
So.
There's lots like repairs, electrical repairs, plumbing, roofing, intercoms. Is that also separate from the 350 we're putting into capital improvement reserves?
Yep.
Or 325, I mean?
These are just the the annual maintenance um, things that, these are bills that we pay. So that list down there, like 8,000 dollars, you know, um, we budgeted 11,000 for roofing inspection every year.
Yeah.
A thousand for glass replacement.
We're expecting to be 30,000 more this year than we were last year. Collectively.
Yeah, I think if you total that up, I. Yeah, I think if you total that up, I would have to look at, I don't know if I have the same breakdown for last year to see what changed.
Yeah, just twenty-four, we spent sixty-seven, twenty-five, we spent sixty-seven, and this year we're budgeting ninety-five.
Yeah.
I, I don't know the whole numbers here.
I mean, the bleacher inspection repair shouldn't be too hard, they're going to be brand new.
They're going to be brand new, so you could do that, you could cut that.
Refinishing the gym floors.
You could cut that. So that's two for.
That's forty.
Four hundred five thousand. Roofing repair, I don't know, I would have to ask John because we just put a hundred and five thousand into the roof. But I don't know if they.
Yeah, we have a section that.
Well, he's been doing it a section at a time, yeah.
It's hard with them. So I want to make sure we are, elevator inspection, is that for the elevator we just got?
Yeah, that has to happen.
No, that's the whole elevator.
Or the ones over here, that was included ones here.
The state requires that, you can't.
Totally a good idea. Are you sure elevator's going down when it's supposed to? Uh, I'm just trying, just quickly. Snow removal kind is what it is, we don't have a breakdown for the last couple of years, but imagine similar each year.
I can ask him though, if he's come, like, if there's a specific reason, I don't know, there's a specific reason why these, like.
Well, it's going to cost thirty thousand more this year than last year.
An eighteen hundred dollar increase in Siemens mechanical, their three percent annual escalation, but.
Yes.
The other thing is that maybe, you know, if he budgets six thousand for electrical repair and seven thousand for plumbing repair and then doesn't need, doesn't need it, that's why it would come in under budget.
Yeah.
You know, then the idea if you don't want.
Well, you have no way of knowing.
Yeah, well, we budgeted ninety-five thousand last year too. We just, we budgeted ninety-five last year, we're budgeting ninety-five again this year. It just looks like we've only spent sixty-seven in twenty-four and twenty-five. So for the past couple of years, we've over budgeted thirty thousand. But again, thirty thousand in repairs.
Right, that can eat up so fast.
We get a storm, so, but we have the capital reserve in emergency, but like I said, we don't want to touch that unless you're happy, that's my move around.
Yeah, we're traditionally, you know, budgeting that amount and, you know, you have the carryover from thirty percent, actually fifty percent of what you're spending.
All right, so are we going to ask John if we can cut more or are we comfortable with where it stands right now?
I mean, I hear you're saying two years in a row, we were thirty percent under, like, maybe we could shave ten percent or fifteen percent off. We have sixty thousand in contingency in this budget too, so if something goes wrong.
Yeah. So we have, we've only ever spent sixty-seven, but I mean, if we left eighty in, I don't know, I'm just throwing a number out there.
Yeah, it looks to me like, you know, when you're roofing inspection repair, you budget a thousand probably for the inspections and ten thousand for any repairs if we need up to. I mean, and you could spend ten thousand dollars on roof pretty fast.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
When you start getting into the, you know, the rubber roofing membrane, you know, this probably has a rock.
I know, what you said, just the bleachers and the gym floor, that's five thousand right there.
Yeah.
That we, and we know we don't need. But if we've always spent sixty-six, sixty-seven, if we were conservative and rounded that up to seventy, and then still have the cushion.
Oh, do another five.
Right.
Yeah.
So even if we budgeted seventy-five thousand.
Yeah.
That's twenty thousand dollars we could save right there.
So I just realized that that, that's the contract services just for the elementary school. And then the next line under it, where we're asking for a hundred and twenty-nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety-eight, that's for the high school. So if we flip to the second page for the next page, page twenty-eight, you'll see another list.
Yeah.
And in, in that one, he deleted the roof repair and deleted the floor refinish.
Well, I find this curious. Well, I find this curious. Okay, decreased two thousand. Elevator inspection, the first one is what, the middle school, I mean, the primary school?
Yeah, the dash ninety is primary.
Yeah.
Then the dash three hundred is all for high school.
So which one's dash three hundred?
Twenty-seven, where's the bridge twenty-seven?
Yeah.
So then this goes to, this goes to high school at three, dash three hundred, but it's all technical. So the dash nine, dash ninety is the primary code.
The reason I ask is, we decreased the elevator at primary school down to two thousand dollars. And now up to the high school, the elevator inspection is at three thousand.
And they'll be paying more for it, although I don't, I would have asked them.
Yeah, I mean, that's just. State inspections and certificates, can't really involve twelve hundred, and here's two thousand, there must be a reason for it.
As far as the dash ninety, that bleacher and roof gym floor, that'd be.
Yeah.
That may be needed, we don't know, because that's not the high school. The high school one, he has zero contingent on getting any bleachers, new floor.
Brown's improvements, twenty-five.
I think that John is back on Monday. What I could do is I can talk to him on Monday and see if we can get some things together to present.
Yeah, so we can't really pull that out of this one.
Right.
Because he's got it up here.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't want to pull anything that we don't need, that he needs.
Yeah.
He absolutely said, yeah.
We were looking at the.
So we should.
He's read this building for long enough and I've been alive. Know what, what do we need for repairs and inspections and stuff? So I'd like him to be the one to say, yeah, I think you guys could save ten thousand, no, I really think you need, you need that money.
Yeah, so let's ask him Monday, Monday about the specifics and then we'll meet and get those answers. Does that work for you all?
Yeah. That would be better. I'm not flying blind.
Yes, same time, maintenance supplies, when you have that conversation. Looks like we've only ever spent eighty-six hundred each year, but we've budgeted twelve thousand seven hundred.
Yeah.
So. Again, if he's, he's, he's the expert in that field, so.
Yeah, that turns rotation.
Yeah.
At page thirty-one, you see a Jonathan, the probation insurance. And that is, we added seven thousand dollars there and we added seven thousand dollars in liability insurance. I think that there's my office, under superintendent or school board.
The school.
Yeah, and that's based on the increase that, that we received. The same thing, you had highlighted the audit and the audit.
Well, I only highlighted those because I know we've mentioned it before and probably not going to be in this budget. I think we should shop around our services. If they're going to raise each of those fourteen thousand dollars overnight, there's other companies that do audits, there's other companies that do insurances, some.
There's really not a lot of other auditors, just based on other superintendents who are still trying to get their twenty-three audits. Like, I'm not even exaggerating, so we're, we're doing really well in the audit game, but there's probably why they think they can raise their prices. The other good thing is this auditor, the town is now using them also, so it's good. So you get to have the town and the school doing the same thing.
And the audit standards have changed significantly, so there's additional records that they have to do now.
Is it a lot more, Kathy?
Well, Ron makes it sound like a lot more.
Fourteen thousand dollars more? Roughly.
They have to, um, once the audit's done, they have to send it to another auditor to audit the audit. Um, I think they're, they get it, it's quite expensive actually. Which is why a lot of, a lot of people drop out doing it.
Yeah.
Keeping one more adult up there.
Yes.
Any other questions?
Almost, most mine are all the same things of instructional supplies, books and periodicals. We're almost, a good portion of them, we're spending more than twice what we even spent last year on all of those, but.
It's the same thing with tuition reimbursement, we see that over and over. And it's just one of those things, like, I, I definitely did not put through all of the tuition that people said they were going to use. Because they never, they don't do it. People say they're going to take all their classes and then they don't. It's a risk, right? Because everybody's entitled, if everyone decided to take all the classes they're entitled to, we would have to take them. So, but I, I feel comfortable running the risk because I watch them, oh yes, I want everything I can get at budget time and then when, you know, comes down to their, how all their classes. The people are afraid if they decline it, then they'll lose their benefit, because it changes their mind.
Yep.
There's one from intended for the tech classes.
Yeah.
I mean, the, just personal, professional development.
Yeah, and also money, like, the more courses you take.
Oh, you did go.
Yeah, and so there's columns in the steps, so you bachelor's, bachelor's plus fifteen, master's, master's plus fifteen. Doc, well, they don't call that good, CAS, some by the certificate, and then after, you know, short stops. Not to mention just learning more, right? And sharing experiences with, you know, educational people.
Uh, I jumped down, seventy-three, page seventy-three is morley, am I saying that right? Staff member, M-O-R-L-E-Y.
Yes.
What do they teach or what do they instruct, you know?
They are the aspirations program, so it's the, the behavior program at the high school.
So they're asking for twenty-four hundred dollars for groceries and games? Do they need groceries in there outside of like the kitchen budget?
Yeah, they do a lot of cook, they do a lot of cooking.
It's like home type programs in there.
Um, it's not a home act.
I don't know, they're, they're teaching, like, cooking with the students, they're teaching them how to cook, teaching them how to, some life skills.
Yep. It's not the life skills program, but it's next door life skills, and they, they do teach those functional skills there.
Melanson must be part of that as well.
Yes, she's the functional life skills teacher. And they're, they're in the suite on the end of the, all the back connecting classrooms, and they both have kitchens.
Nine hundred is special education, right?
Nine hundred is district. So nine hundred is central office. Nine ninety is special ed.
I'm on page seventy-five, it's, it's, and Alicia, Alicia Wright, she works in special education, right?
She's in special ed, but she's, she's a district employee, the same as Andrea level, so there.
Tuition reimbursement for the director, is that, talking with Andrea level?
Yes.
So I assume between the two of them, they, one asked for sixteen hundred, one asked for twelve hundred, they both have said they want to take classes this year. They've only ever spent.
You're on tuition?
They've only ever spent two hundred dollars a year in tuition, but this year they want sixteen fifty and twelve fifty. Again, they're entitled to it, they're going to spend it.
Tuition.
It looks like Andrea's, it looks like Andrea's never, I'm assuming she already had a lot of money in tuition already before she became a director. Um, so it looks like she's never used it, I was just curious.
Yeah. I, I mean, like, we could cut it and if they, and.
Oh, no, she says she's going to use it, I'm not going to cut it. I'm just curious, I'm just looking at the actuals for the past few years.
I'm, I'm not taking any classes and I put my money at zero. But then my secretary wants to.
Yes, the pageant before that too, towards the bottom, subs and tutors. In that bottom section, dash nine hundred, that's going from nine hundred dollars to five thousand dollars.
I feel like that's actually in the, that probably in the wrong space. Because this would be subs and tutors for, for Alicia or Andrea, and that doesn't, that probably should not be there.
Okay, so we don't have a sub for Andrea?
No.
And Alicia's her, like, her admin assistant?
Yeah. Yeah, that, we can probably cut that out of there.
It looks like we spent a thousand dollars last year, so I'm assuming like Alicia called out when they needed to move.
Well, I don't think we've ever done that though, I can look into that and see what that is. Hey Kathy?
Yeah?
Do you have your profile open?
I don't, but I can.
We budgeted five thousand in special services administration for subs and tutors. Oh, it may be for tutors, actually. Uh, so sometimes when there's a student who will require a tutor, a special ed student who will require something different, actually, I would need to talk to Andrea about, before we just cut that.
Yeah, it's looks like we spent zero, that we spent nine hundred.
Yeah.
Now we're budgeting five thousand, but maybe we have a couple of students this year that she's expecting that are going to require a lot more tutoring. So maybe it's a valid reason we just.
But I, I will definitely ask about that.
Sorry, not to sound ignorant again, but S slash H, like on page eighty, like halfway down our general supplies, it says A forty or a thousand dollars with S slash H. Is that for? There's a few different spots in here that say that. But we spent zero, then we spent a hundred dollars last year, and now we're budgeting eleven hundred this year.
So she's ordered something for a one thousand ninety-five that includes, wants to order something and that includes shipping and handling. Um, and I, I will have to get back to you and tell you what I would suggest she's buying, so that's.
That's under, that's under therapies, right?
Yeah, occupational therapist.
So she needs a piece of equipment for whatever.
Yeah, that is a piece of equipment.
So S and H is the shipping and handling. I was curious, because, well, I thought it was, I said, oh, it was going to be, that's what it was.
Do you need to have a check on that for you, Jonathan, or are you comfortable with that?
No, I'm, I'm, I don't even know exactly what it is. I was just curious what S and H was. We're spending a thousand dollars for shipping and handling for something, I was wondering what that something was. That would probably be a low number on that. No, well, it's not a big number, but page eighty-four, right in the middle, instructional supplies for three hundred, it must be the high school. We've always spent zero, 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 and we're.
Oh, this is under gifted and talented?
Twelve fifty.
Yeah. Um, I hope that we get a gifted and talented instructor, instructor that will stay with us.
I'm right above that.
And want to be able to provide them with money to buy supplies.
I'm, I'm up here, just, you know, actually, is this part of the gifted and talented, this whole thing?
Yes, yeah, this is page eighty-four.
Yep.
And so I zeroed out a lot of the things that were in, in that.
I see a lot of things got cut out of there.
But I wanted to, if, I, I hope that we can find an accelerated, some sort of accelerated learning teacher that will stay. We had, we, the position was empty, actually, the position was empty in twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. But budgeted, right? So we raised the money for the gifted and talented teacher for years. When I got here, I was like, we need to hire someone. Um, so we placed an ad and we hired, we hired no one in the twenty-three, twenty-four year. In the twenty-four, twenty-five year, we did get one and she came on board. She was a retired teacher, but then she left after just a few months because her personal reasons. I think it was, you know, a lot to come out of retirement or. Oh, but anyway, I don't want to zero it out because we're obligated to have that position, I think we need to find someone.
And then if we do, they're going to need sponsors.
Yeah, I don't want them, so that's going to have to build a program from scratch, because there's been no program here for a couple of years. And so they're going to come into a situation where there's not even a set classroom and no one's been doing the job, and I would like to let them. I was thinking that would be a good thing.
Do we have an idea of the number of students that would?
Yeah.
Go to that program?
So when Lisa Austin came, she did screening, I said, focus on third to eighth grade, like this middle chunk. And they were probably, she really had a little core group of a dozen kids between the two buildings. And so I, I think that in the, in the future, if we get someone and then have them just focus on middle school and not call it just gifted and talented, but have it be some kind of enrichment, accelerated learning position. Maybe we could find money to have it be a halftime GT or like use that salary and then find some other money they could do to extend the learning opportunities. We lost that for neither person through high school. But that's, we've got to get a person first. Oh yeah, that's just a number, it's not a license, it's just that we're having a program.
That makes sense. The only last two I have was under athletics on eighty-six and eighty-seven, which I think, obviously, we need, we need the money for athletics. I was curious of what you needed for, on page eighty-seven, the equipment. We've spent forty-two hundred, forty-nine hundred, but budgeting seven thousand. Is there an expected additional equipment we need this year?
The, I will have to find out.
Additional two thousand.
Yeah, no, they're definitely, I think. Yeah, no, they're definitely, um, I think it's weight room, I think you want to redo the weight room.
I think it was last time in the eighties.
Yeah, uh, it's definitely.
It works, but it's pretty old.
It's definitely equipment, um, I think that the money we spent this year was on the climbing stuff, and rope courses, and getting everybody certified. We'll, we use grant money to get everybody certified to teach that, but I'm pretty certain that for next year, that is um, weight room.
And then transportation, we spent eighty-eight hundred this year, but we're budgeting fifteen thousand, is there a lot more? Sports, transportation for sports, expected?
So that's for athletics?
I know we're doing more and more, Brandon's getting us into more leagues, more.
That would just be for secondary athletics, yeah, we could maybe cut some more out of that. Also, I would wanna make sure that that, that there's no more bills coming in, for sports.
Right, I said, I know Brandon's getting us into a lot of stuff building our athletic program.
He is.
Doing phenomenal at that, so if he's expecting more travel, more sports, more games, stuff like that, I'm okay with covering sports, so. If, if we need that full number, but.
I don't know, if everything for June, like I would have to talk to Shelley and see how she divides up travel and transportation, like when she gets.
So that number could be far closer to the number they're asking for.
Right, cause twenty-four says we spent thirteen thousand.
Yeah, and we're doing more sports, and our kids are going more places, like they're lasting seasons longer, right? So in twenty-four, I don't know how many teams got to win the playoffs, but in twenty-five, almost everybody have to go, which means more transportation.
So if we're at that thirteen thousand or above from last year anyways, or twenty-four budget, then fifteen thousand's a reasonable number.
Yeah. But I can, um, we did shave off two thousand.
Yep.
So, but yep, do you want me to ask um, Brandon for explanation on that, or just?
I think it's simple, if they think it's gonna be close to the thirteenth of the year before, I'm, I'm gonna go with that number, it's, I don't think it'll change, but. Should've wrote it down, run through, so I know, John, we just, that's, that's my basic general questions, I know we found a few areas, we might be able to get some more significant savings, find out about.
Yeah, I talked to Chelsea today about the um, conferences on the technology, and she felt like that was too high. There were two twelve hundred dollar conferences, one for the middle high school, one for the elementary school. And she doesn't want it to be zero, because she would like to go to the ACTM conference, and she would like to have some money available in case something important came up. But she felt like we could reduce that. And I can continue to ask on all of the things that you highlighted, and see if we can shave off the.
I mean, a lot of them are instructional, for the intuition and stuff, and it's just the instructional, I know that's what they're asking for, but almost all the instructional, in books and periodicals, they're asking for twice what they even spent in the past two years, so it's.
Yeah, and so, and it'd be, it's probably, if you go through it and look, the two schools are different, because um Stacy, who's coming from a different type of school, might be worse like a hawk, and she just declined a lot of requests and said, what we're gonna do is everyone's gonna get an allowance, like two hundred and fifty dollars. And then for their supply line, she said every, they're going, instead of every teacher ordering and hoarding their own supplies, which happened, I was a teacher here, they're gonna try and create like a general supply.
That is very much a Catholic school model.
Yeah.
That's exactly how we.
And I don't think that's happening here, but I like it, and so maybe we can do that here, we can move towards that model.
It also, it tends to break camaraderie, because then it's, oh, I need something, and then you go to the other teachers if it's not in the supply cabinet, and be like, hey, did anyone grab all the, whatever it was, and.
Yeah.
So there's, it tends to.
Yeah, and Stacy said that that was a concern, people were worried, like, well, what if I be, you know, phone core and so on, she was like, then we'll get even more.
Right.
We'll figure that, I was like, okay.
And you also ask around.
Yep. Yeah, they're really full in the other building, they have the Roots Reusables um, membership, and Danielle gets a ton of stuff from there.
It's awesome.
It is awesome. And then we can do that here, and it gets very easy now too, but there's a reason why we can't do that.
Sorry, I mean, hijack time for about.
No, no, like, we're kind of relying on you with your questions, cause you add so many last thought.
Busy couple of weeks, so that's a quick look I could do, but. I know we had, I'm looking at the calendar, we put out a couple of weeks ago about the budget schedule, next meeting was supposed to be Monday.
It's up to you guys if we need that, um, we definitely have to meet on Tuesday, because that's our regular monthly meeting, and the agenda's got a lot of stuff on it, including budget. So it's up to you guys.
Now. Will Monday give you enough time, well, just to have like a, the proposed budget with the, like the, we went through tonight, and yeah, we can save this, this and this, but there's also some questions you wanna ask, like Chelsea has a couple of areas, John might have a couple of areas. Is it feasible to have that prepared for, if we don't do, meet Monday, how prepared for Tuesday night?
Tu- a Tuesday would be better, because that would give me two days.
Cause I don't wanna get back together if you don't have time to get it done.
Maybe night, just something, be a little longer meeting, that's all, cause we have a regular meeting that night too.
Tuesday's our regular.
Tuesday, yes.
Yes.
So if we don't meet Monday, Tuesday's gonna be fairly long meeting.
Well, if everybody's gone till Monday, are you able to get all the answers in time until Monday?
Like I um, yeah, everybody doesn't work Saturday and Sunday.
Tomorrow's a holiday.
But Monday, and it's a holiday weekend.
Right.
Yeah, if we skip Monday, and they brought back answers and a new version with changes on Tuesday night, we s- we could still meet on Wednesday night if we need to.
And finalize it, cause we had to have it to the town manager by what day?
Thursday.
Thursday, so.
I think if we talk to John and Chelsea, and all that stuff, we just talked about cutting, right now, we've. I'm gonna back page again.
We, we may be able to settle it Tuesday night, if we have to stay later to do it, that's what we do.
Yeah.
It's, yeah, cause it's on the budget.
As it, as it stands right now, we've reduced, one that got rejected to this proposal was two hundred and thirty thousand dollars, what we, you've already reduced it, I'm reading that right, the budget difference?
Yeah.
Where's that?
And then if.
Oh, no, that's the increase from last, from last year's, ten point five to ten point eight.
Yeah.
I'm trying to think off the top of my head, well, you have the number off the top of your head in front of you that?
What the original one was?
What the original was, it just got rejected? Actually, I think it's only ninety-five thousand that we've cut right now.
Yeah, well, we need to, you know, find a little more.
It was up three point zero six percent, and we've got it down to being up two point one eight percent, so we've cut.
Ninety-three.
You know, about.
So we've cut, we've cut ninety-three thousand with this budget right here. This budget's ninety-three, so.
Without our answers.
Right, so, between Monday and Tuesday, talk to like Barbara, if that ninety-three thousand comes closer to like.
One fifty.
One fifty, we may be able to write up a case on, on, on Tuesday.
Yeah, that would be.
If that helps explain, there's some number we need to.
It gives us, I mean, we can tell people to cut over a hundred thousand dollars, it gives us a. Cause I'd like to get it passed as quickly as possible, and also be as efficient as possible, so.
All that does was tool, then we build our next budget, we can.
Right, it gets us something stoned for this year, and then plenty of time for everybody to get on board, get a committees going. Get a hard look at the budget for next year, we can, we can tear this thing apart, like Christopher said, I like the idea of breaking it down into five, it's five members, five people get assigned this section of the budget, we all go through it.
If you look at it, if we can go forward.
This is pretty daunting.
With a two percent increase, we've actually cut the budget by two percent because of inflation. Cause inflation's four percent. So, you know, and, and, and money comparatively speaking.
No, that's great, if you give me a number to get to, or I can, I can do that.
If, if it's, if it's reasonable, let's talk, talk to those departments, if they can reasonably justify, no, like, we need this money for this. I'm not gonna tell John, but we need to save a hundred thousand dollars, so we're cutting it regardless, I swear on, if we can reasonably do it.
Okay, sounds good.
Does everybody?
I, I just had a quick little thing, I was looking at this, the, the agreements out, agreements in, that business, but the numbers for twenty-five point six are, there were a couple of zeros there, I couldn't, do we, were that explained?
Have we not got, we haven't got their, the answer yet?
Agreements in, agreements out, you mean the.
Well, actually, particularly, the private school and the tuition and.
Yeah, no, we're just, it's still early.
Right.
There are people, I got two more requests today, so they, they dribbling over, and then um, there will be another flurry of that type of activity.
In August.
At the end of August.
That's what I figured, and then.
And then our new numbers right now don't include, the, the new, the new school year isn't set yet, so, but we have a whole bunch of kids or students who are coming, so I'm hoping our student can close up it.
Right. Uh, and very general question, if ten people show up to vote on the school budget when we actually had that vote, and they pass it, that's it, right? Doesn't matter, we don't have a quorum to meet, or a sort of speed, or a percentage, or?
It's a two-step process again, so.
Right, but then, yeah, when it goes before the.
Yep, no, it won't matter. And.
It's three hundred people.
Yep.
Twenty-five people, it doesn't matter.
Usually, like the last two years are not usual, it's been different. Prior to the last two years, cause I've been to everyone, there will be um, the people on the school committee, and the town employees who work for the school. And maybe Pam Logan, right, and like, that's who's been at the meetings for years. I don't even know, you always go, check, but it's just like a very small handful of people, like Dennis and Sarah will be there, um, I'm there. So I, I don't know what to expect of this, I have no idea if we're gonna have.
Well, we could be in a position, Jefferson, they, they rejected their budget.
By two votes.
By two votes, now the new budget went up a million dollars because of special needs students that have moved into the district since the vote. Which in some ways is a better way to have it, because they're not gonna get blindsided midway through the year and have to appropriate funds.
You never know.
And, but it may happen to us after we finalize the budget, but the, the, the big bugaboo in this country is that the special needs, not special ed, but special needs students, and the government just isn't funding them appropriately, not that we can do anything about it, but you know, the, the local schools are ending up holding the bag.
Yeah.
Sometimes for a hundred thousand dollars on some of these kids, and they're not even their kids.
Um, long range, what we can do about it is, I think, early childhood intervention, right? So if we catch them when they're three, and get them into the system, that, instead of having them show up when they're five.
Our attention spans seem to be a big problem, and keeping kids focused, and maybe we need to revisit our phone policy.
Yes.
I was gonna say, it's not many members in the public here tonight, but I, I would like to hear from Mr. Ed, he's an expert in the Education Department from the state level, if he has anything to add about his thoughts on.
Yeah.
How the budget process goes, or how it's looking, or. Any ques- any comment or questions?
I have a great deal of difficulty trying to follow that you can do. I look at school finances from three aspects. And we tend to, in the middle, as we talk about the budgets, first, first aspect is the cost, what is the cost of school to run, accomplish what we need to do during next year?
Well, that's what we just talked about.
Everything, everything we need to do to operate the school. Second aspect is, where's the money all gonna come from? Some brands go to specific tasks, whatever, um, get specific subsidies. The revenue is a separate issue, the real concern is what do we need to spend to operate the school? The third aspect, which I heard a little bit about tonight, is cash flow, well, we haven't posted invoices yet, that's another aspect of the money. So the way I look at it, the most critical thing is, we need the right amount of money to pay for the tasks we need to accomplish, whatever that cost is.
Yeah.
So, um, as an example of what might happen at the next special town meeting. Article two, regular instruction. If you look at your sheets here, during this past year, current year, with your estimate at the end of fiscal year, you spent three million two hundred thousand dollars. Your proposed budget increases that to three million six. Regular instruction increases four hundred thousand dollars in the current year to next year. Wow, that's significant to me. So if I look at the breakout for regular instruction, and there were four pieces of it. The first one was A, was uh, two through eight instruction. That amount increased from actuals this current year to a projection next year of about two hundred thousand dollars. And the first question I guess, why? What has happened in grades three through eight that's caused that to increase sixteen percent? That, that's an issue to me.
Would that be an increase in students?
Didn't have an answer, I just wanted to let you know. The second thing, uh, K, K two was pretty much unchanged, which said, well, what's going on with three to eight that's not going on with three to two? The next item was pre-K went up by a hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars. Something's going on that I don't understand, but a ton of questions there. So I just use that as one example of the articles that I will still have some questions on. I'm not sure what's going on, we did a, I believe, a reasonable job this past fiscal year for ten, what was it? Ten million sixty-two thousand, and we're gonna go to ten million eight, which is a seven, a seven hundred and forty-five thousand dollar increase. Oh, so, something I don't understand, now, there's probably some reasonable answers for it, I don't know what they are, but that's the kind of concerns that I have with respect to the budget, so, if you wanna take, get one of those items like regular instruction and go from there. Whatever, whatever it is like, that's kind of concerned that I'm.
So would you like answers for those, would you like a breakdown of that sort of thing for the public, is that what you're asking for, Ed?
Well, I would, I would like to go to the special town meeting and have no questions on. So if, if you wanna take that one as an example, regular instruction, and it was the item eleven hundred, three to eight instruction, it's up by a hundred ninety-five thousand dollars, so what was the cause of that? And that, that was relative to actuals, not the previous budget. If I go back and look at the previous budget, we had a carryover of five hundred and ten thousand dollars. That tells me that that previous budget was overestimated by five hundred thousand dollars. So, so I believe we need to start with this year's actuals. Go from there to what you need, so my question is, why, why do we need another four hundred thousand dollars?
So, my idea is, um, when we do the, we could do a presentation, I could do a presentation, the budget, at the beginning of the town meeting, that showed by cost center, what the difference is, up or down, and then why.
That'd be great.
If we could just do that.
Do you feel that that it would answer questions and be?
That'll help on a lot of them.
Beautiful.
Yeah, because.
But, I think the key to me is not last year's budget versus next year's budget, it's last year's actuals, which is. Cause you've got real data there to tell, what do you have to spend at the time.
The biggest piece of the budget is our salaries. And we, we did a thirty-two percent increase in salaries over three years in the aggregate. That doesn't mean that every person got thirty-two percent, it depends on what step they were on, so that's, that was just to get us not even in the same ballpark, but it, well, inside the fence, you know, with our surrounding towns.
But that, that's why I'm only using this year's actuals, cause all that passes in this year's actuals.
Well, and then there's another, I mean, they, they get them again, everyone gets that step next year.
If the answer is for K, for three to eight, to give everybody a seventeen percent raise.
Well, it, not, yeah.
Right, but that there will be an increase by that amount because of salaries, that's what you're saying.
If that was something more reasonable, like five or seven percent, so that's on that.
Yeah.
Right.
But it's seven, really seventeen percent.
Yeah.
Excuse me?
Yes, go ahead.
Well, those raises are contractual, well, you, 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 whatever the percentage is, it is.
And I don't have a problem with that.
Yeah, but what I'm saying, in those classes, maybe do a little research, quite possibly for that, there, there may be an increase of seven or eight students. Percentage wise, that'll blow things sideways. You know what I mean, it may cost per student, may not be as bad as it looks. Because maybe they had, just to throw a number, thirty-eight kids this last year, and then this year they had fifty-two, just because it's a big class.
Okay, and in some case like that, you may need another teacher.
Yeah, that's, I mean, that would, that would explain.
So what you want is a presentation of this, the actual from the year before, what we're budgeting for, and why those changes are occurring? You don't, now, let, I just wanna be sure that we're answering these before we send Kim off to do this, and then come back with the wrong information.
I don't know if I can do that for Tuesday.
That, no, no, no.
But for July twenty-third.
Absolutely, and um, so if she does a presentation as to what last year's actuals were, what this year's budget is, the budget that we have come up with now, or will come up with within the next.
When you say last year, you mean fiscal year twenty-five?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah.
So Kathy, do you think I can reasonably do that? Use fiscal year '25 actuals before they're audited, or is this?
You've got them all here. These numbers here are fine. I understand Kathy, she's got some problems with invoices and whatnot, but this data is fine.
Kathy, this would be for the, for what meeting? This would be for the special town meeting, um, if we go through by cost center and show FY '25 actuals compared to FY '26 budget.
Yeah, we should have everything booked within the next two weeks.
Yeah.
So.
And, and I, I want to go any further than what you have, but you have an access for the, the fiscal year 25 right here. I would just use that.
Well, that isn't true and accurate, actually. That's only 11 months.
Yeah, like a few more things.
What goes till July 30th?
I know, but the bills haven't been paid yet, so she doesn't.
So we have to wait until 100 grand.
They had until August 30th.
All right. So, and now let me get back to what your, you, your sequestration is, so that I'm sure that we're being clear.
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
Actual against budget, and the reason for that increase as the school's needs. What are those needs and why?
By cost center.
By cost.
The warrant articles.
We can dig into that.
The warrant articles.
Warrant articles. And I guess that may affect the other subsequent articles, too. And one of the, one of the questions that I found in the audit, when I reviewed the articles, was another $600,000 in various funds, funds in grants. And I, I'm not sure what the current status of those are in the reserve funds. I don't know what the current balances are.
I can tell you what the $600,000 is. For three years now, we've taken $600,000 from fund balance to offset the budget. So it's on our revenue sheet.
$600,000.
Three years in a row we've done it. So.
List of 22 separate funds in grants, funds in grants that have money in them. It's a mixture of $600,000.
All right, and that's the way you're talking about. Okay.
I don't know that it, it affects the budget, but I am concerned with the subsequent articles and the warrant that deal with the reserves. Capital reserve fund, the reserve fund. And the real, the real question, same question, what is the balance of that fund at the end of this fiscal year, and what are you proposing for the next fiscal year, and why would change? Same thing.
Does that work for Kim?
I believe that tells us, yes.
For the $100,000?
Left in there.
Can you say that again, Ed?
Let me give you an example. Article 17 of the school capital reserve fund.
Yeah, when we end up with 900,000.
And the question is, what is the balance of that fund at the end of, at the end of?
Supposed to be, I'm sure here.
Why are you proposing this next year? Why?
So at the end of June, it should be, um, Kathy, our capital fund is like down to, capital reserve fund now is down to like less than 20 grand, right?
It was actually down to a negative because we had to prepay for the gym, right?
Okay, so.
See, that, and that's.
That, that was for paving last year, but then this year it's for the gym floor.
Yeah. Designated reserves are 20. Right now it's 1.669. That's what we have.
Yeah.
1.7. After we, so we're successful on designated, it's 900.
Yeah, that's all we left.
On designated, yeah. And then we'll still have $700,000 in designated.
All right. So those things, what you've asked will answer budget questions. You're comfortable with that?
And on, on our next, um, special town meeting, we only have to do Articles 1 through 15. The other ones are of them that you're discussing.
And I, I agree with you on that, because it is tax money.
Okay, and according to.
Not all, but it keeps, keep reasonable.
Like, we only go through, not the others. We just don't think that was approved.
4, 500,000 is right in.
We just asked for authorization to spend.
Okay, so if you would add a, I mean, what are the words I'm looking for?
An explanation.
Thank you. There's the word I'm looking for. It wasn't coming out. An explanation of that, so that that is clear as well?
But I remember that only Article 16, project at that special town meeting, the rest of the voters, they already have one question, and they've injected it all.
But that's an issue that we can't, like, you, we need to go back to the legislature and get them to change the process because those Articles 16 through the end, we're not raising any money. They're only authorized to spend money that exists in fund balance already.
And my point is, is that you need the authorization from the voters to spend that money.
Okay, so if we can get clarification on that point, because I'm, I'm not a lawyer, so I don't know. So, um, let's get clarification on that point and present that clarification as well.
Yeah.
So that we are.
I will do.
Clear as to what all expectations are around all those things. I think that's important.
That was when, when the budget was rejected, the first call I made, I was up all night like, oh my God. Like, we started working on this gym floor.
Yeah.
That was good. Like, all of those questions were set on, on the 29th of April. So we'll be able to clarify.
Please do.
Yes.
All right. Does anyone have any other questions or chat?
Yeah, I do, actually. I have a couple of questions. I, I, I concur with, with Ed because, I mean, clearly, right here, and, and hopefully that will be some legislation change because there's no clear definition. This is the complete warrant that we voted on. There's no designation that one of them goes through and won't have a best one. So, you know, on this warrant.
No, but the question that you vote on on June 10th asks if you approve the amount of money raised at the special town meeting.
There is no number, which that's a possibility.
That's true, but the only money that you raised at the town meeting were the first 15 articles.
So we'll get clarification on that.
We will, absolutely. I'll make sure we have them. Uh, the question I have, it, well, first of all, statement, this is mine now. This budget is here, these numbers are here, we have a warrant here, we have more numbers here. How many different layouts can we possibly do? This, this is crazy talk. Nobody could follow this. It's almost like it's intended to deceive the board alone, let alone the public. The, I commend every single one of you that are here that took the time. I wasn't privy to this. This is crazy. You guys have never seen this before. You've known it, it's been here before. Haven't seen it in this format. This is nuts. Why can't you just see it the same way twice? I've never seen it the same way twice. So I'm not even going to pretend like I'm going to try and find my question that was raised several weeks ago. Very simple. The phones for WES and high school budgeted $6,000. Has that been cut out of this budget? Because we only spent less than $1,000. We're budgeting $12,000. And it was $11,600, uh, in '25. Actual spent $700, $800, less than $1,000. That question was raised several, several weeks ago, and I didn't get that question. Come on. Uh, is that some decision, some money, there's an explanation? I have down here, uh, we're going to book them through the phones. And I haven't heard that discussion since. Uh, but the answer to your question is yes, Kim. I will leave you.
So, Tom, did you, did you see?
The phones are on my, it's one of my highlights, the phones.
It highlighted, yeah.
It classed up two months ago.
So I know one difference.
We were spending like $500 a year, and then all of a sudden we jumped to $12,000.
We had switched several years ago to just internet-only phones, and then not, not fiscal year '25, but fiscal year '24, we had lost power. And when we lose power, we don't have phones if we had kids in the building. So I had phone landlines put into both buildings. Now, is that the $6,000? I gotta find out for sure. For each building. But that's, that's a phone change that I made. I installed a landline in each building because I know teachers were unhappy that they were in the building with students if they didn't have a working telephone.
Even that changed. That put landlines into the front offices. Like, this classroom still can't call out. And we should have that capability. Every teacher should have the capability to pick their phone on their desk and call 911. Because there's an computer on the second floor at that end. The front office isn't even going to know about it until it's too late. They should be able to. Or panic alarms. That's safety committee stuff, not doing with the budget right now, but that's stuff they voice spoke safety-wise.
Yeah.
What happens, what happens if the front office, it's the first place it gets hit, and they're the only people that can call out.
Well, we'll have to have something in place because if you prohibit phones in the building, you still have to have an ability to, in emergencies.
Yeah.
So, yes, that, if you can find out what that $6,000 was, is that now off of there? Was that installation?
It's still in there.
It's still in there as then, what that's talking about. Is that the landlines? Is that? Thank you.
And if we can save any off?
Well.
Because I'm going to get to this.
Okay. Any other?
Well, we touched some high points. Now we have another four days to peruse through this again.
Mm-hmm.
And possibly find more.
Right. And collectively, I mean, I sent it to you today because, oh, the first second I got, but it's just, if we have time over the next few days where we go through this, say, I think we might be able to cut here or there. We can send it to her before Tuesday or Monday.
I was just going to say, please do that.
So if she shows up Tuesday, it's not, why can't we cut this? We already asked those questions.
And the earlier the better. I will work tomorrow weekend, so that would be helpful.
Well, basically, I would just go the whole thing and I would get, present you with a list. These are the items I see.
The earlier the better. Yeah, thank you.
Here's the list.
Because you would like to, we would like to have this.
We'll just fix that.
We would like to have this by Tuesday in workable order that we can go incorporate.
Yes. So that if, if then on Tuesday, you decide like, this isn't enough, or we can do more, we can, we still have time to come back on Wednesday. But, um, because then Thursday morning, I should type up the articles. Actually, I should prepare warrant articles for Tuesday in case you adopt it, then you can sign those. And then if it doesn't work, we come back on Wednesday, we'll just make new ones again. So because then I have to take that to the town office Thursday. Now, Dennis has not responded when I said, is there any flexibility? Because the select board needs to get their packet that Thursday before the meeting, just like you guys do. So, um, I know sometimes things get added to the packet later, but I'm endeavoring to do it by Thursday. That would be the right way to do it.
Is everybody comfortable with that timeline and how we're proceeding at this?
Well, we kind of have to.
Okay. Yeah. All right. So that works for everybody?
All right.
All right, we are not adopting a budget today. We have some questions still. We did review. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Do I have a second? All in favor?
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Kathy. Thank you. Good night. I'll talk to you.
One of my shorts, no. I almost brought them.
There was an example of the voiceover internet protocol.
Yes.
All right.
All right. Did you have any questions that I, I'm sorry, I?
No, no, no. No, I was just curious. I presume the warrant, the language for the warrant is a very prescribed.
Sorry, I accidentally called my husband, and now he thinks I'm being dirty.
Oh, oh, okay.
Hi, I'm sorry. I was about to dial. I'll call you. Yeah, I'm fine. I'll call you. Yeah, I'm, we're, I'm heading home in a few minutes. Let me call you when I get home. Sorry.
Poor guy.
You can't say but. We're still on John.
Yeah. And I'm sorry, what was your?
No, I was just, I'm, the.